Ladies and gentlemen, the time is now seven o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome everybody here tonight. Good to see a good turnout again. Always good to see all of these faces out here. Really welcome that. I hope you keep on coming back for more and more. So anyway, I'd like everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I will leave that.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and infinite.
All right, our first item is our consent agenda. I have one item on there I would like to pull for further discussion. Item I, and I make that in the form of a motion. If I could get a second?
Second.
Okay, and a motion made in a second to pull item I for further discussion. All in favor? All opposed? All right. Okay, the item I is a request to add emergency medical services personnel. And I would like some direction, I guess I'll ask my county manager. Don't we already have vacancies in that department, rescue workers and stuff?
So in the last week, our EMS and Brian, feel free to make sure I put it clear on this. In the last week, we've been talking with our EMS folks. We have some vacancies that are brought about by people who are on military leave or adult maternity leave, various things like that. And so that means that we don't have enough people to fill all of the shifts. And so this request is to make sure that we're adequately staffed for all the shifts that we need to cover on a day's, week's time.
Okay, so you say there's no actual, right now, any vacancies. They're already manned, but people, vacation, family leave?
My HR director's not here, so I don't want to say absolutely. We're in the process of hiring people, so we might have vacancies as we're filling positions and making offers. But this is to make sure we have enough people to fill all the shifts, to cover all of the committed EMS stations. And my EMS director's also shaking his head out in the audience as well. To make sure we're completely staffed, because we have experienced some coverage questions and issues in the last couple of weeks.
Oh, right, and this is a reason for this item E.
That is right, yes.
Any further discussion? All right, I'm gonna read off all these consent agendas. Item A is August 19th, 2024 minutes. Item B is a fiscal year budget amendment number four. Item C is a surplus and sale weapon to Deputy Sheriff Stan Wilson for $1. Item D, which is a fiscal year, 25, HCC BG, which stands for Home and Community Care Block Grant for Older Adults, County Funding Plan Revision. Item E, Resolution Authorizing Agricultural Advisory Board's Establishment of the Enduring Farmer Award. Item F, Triangle North Franklin Phase Number Two Road Right of Entry License Agreement. Item G, North Carolina Arts Council Grassroots Grant Funds. Item H, US One North Commerce Park Arrow Rock Assignment Agreement. And item I, the one we just discussed, the request to add emergency medical services personnel. Do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Thank you. Been a motion made in a second, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Now, once again, item two, most important agenda item of the whole night, is comments from the public. This is a time set aside by the Board of Commissioners to allow individuals five minutes to address the board on issues concerning the county. And our first sign up is Mason Rizzo. Please come to the podium.
Good evening, Commissioners, County Administrative Staff and Neighbors, Mason Rizzo, Youngsville. I'm here tonight to plead with you all for empathy, assistance, and, most importantly, resources as the Youngsville community continues to detonate both with residents in the 27596 area code and vehicles cutting through Youngsville using Highway 96. I'm speaking tonight to correct two mistakes that I made in my August address. I misspoke about the volume of traffic that feeds the Youngsville Business District. For clarity, 30% of traffic patronizes our independently owned and operated businesses. That, of course, leaves 70% of Main Street traffic, a number in the tens of thousands, driving through our town with zero intention of stopping at any of our businesses. What kind of traffic is congesting Youngsville anyway? Hurried 18-wheelers, dump trucks, and large vehicles, with giant trailers concerned with offloading their cargo as quickly as possible. Hurried contractors anxious to get to their next job site. Hurried parents zipping through town to get to school, or dance, or gymnastics, or karate, and so on. The obvious common denominator here is the rush that every motorist is in eagerly only to get through Youngsville as fast as possible. I challenge anyone in this room to come to downtown Youngsville anytime between 3:00 and 6:00 PM and attempt to cross Main Street, or Pine Street, or College Street, or Cross Street. Motorists driving through Youngsville treat our town like a nuisance to be rid of as quickly as possible. They treat pedestrian crosswalks as if they're nonexistent. They speed on side streets, not simply making them unwalkable, but truly dangerous to our residents, and they behave with outward hostility towards pedestrians looking to walk in our town. I've stopped counting, personally, the times that someone has blown their horn, given me the middle finger, or shouted obscenities at me and my family for the perceived disruption in their hurry. They consider us a nuisance to them instead of recognizing that their traffic volume isn't simply a nuisance to us, it's an existential threat to our lives. Further, we're going to see irreversible economic impacts as congestion and safety concerns continue to deter people from visiting local businesses. This is no secret. Every statistical data point shows that our crisis replicated across communities all over the nation make towns like ours less attractive to potential home buyers and investors. Inaction will continue to metastasize into catastrophic loss. If we don't get your assistance fast, we won't just continue to bear heavy traffic loads, we are going to see increased accident rates as people rush through town without concern for pedestrians. I already know how it feels, and if the car that hit me while I was crossing Main Street had been one of the huge trucks, one of the aggressive drivers speeding through downtown, not yielding the crosswalk, I would be no more than a grease spot on the street and not here to talk to you guys today. This brings into my second clarification. Last month, I mentioned that Nathan Page deserves the utmost respect and support. This is unquestionable. Mr. Page has elite service experience in academic scaffolding from one of the premier public administration programs in the nation, is a thoughtful and fearless leader, and his brief tenure has realized better results for the town of Youngsville than anyone in recent history. We are blessed to have Mr. Page's staff of smart, kind, and hardworking people in our community. However, he has not done this alone, and his staff, peers, and Board of Commissioners deserve not just public praise, but respect and resources from everyone on the board that I address tonight. Youngsville is fortunate to have its Commissioners working tirelessly for their citizens. Mayor Flowers, Mayor Flowers isn't just a great figurehead. He literally brought me a bottle of water and comforted me while I bled on the sidewalk the night I was struck by a car. Police Chief Whitley and Fire Chief Christmas, all of our first responders, they commit themselves night and day to the needs of the citizens constantly imperiled by the aggressive drivers and other motorists behavior in our town. There are reasons why the town of Youngsville won the Vernon Danes Award for Outstanding Comprehensive Plan by the American Planning Association this year. It's because they have put in motion a series of steps to turn one of Franklin County's most important towns into a world-class municipality. Please do not discredit their work by prolonging the needs of the community. Youngsville and its citizens are desperate for and deserve assistance from the county. I really appreciate everyone's time, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker here is an old, old acquaintance of mine, takes me way back to the 1980s, Mr. Kermit Hoyle. Please come to the podium, please. He was a former Franklin County instructor, way back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. I'm not a very good speaker, and it looks like I came at the wrong time, but I had a complaint about the tax and went to the members of the President, and he didn't know anything about it. I had a complaint, and he just wrote it down on a piece of paper, what the deductions he would give me. And as far as I can see, I didn't get any deduction. I've been paying $3,500 tax each year. This year, it went up $1,200. But I don't think it's fair, I don't think you can sit on a car and appraise a piece of land. But I came to have y'all look at it, but I'm late, it seems like, and I appreciate the opportunities to speak to you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoyle. Appreciate you bringing that to our attention, I sure do. All right, our next speaker is Carla Rossige. I got you. I'm gonna learn it one of these days. Don't give up on me. That's right, keep coming back, that's right.
Good evening. My name is Carla Rossige. I live at 1490 Old Halifax Road in Zebulon. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to speak tonight, and I'm gonna speed read through this. As usual, I'm here to speak about animal shelter issues and related matters. At the last Animal Services Advisory Board meeting, I thanked the county leaders in attendance for the county's fiscal year 2024 commitment to spay neuter initiatives for the shelter animals, community-owned animals in TNVR. It signals a new willingness by the county to partner with the larger community, supporting rescues and animal advocates to address pet overpopulation and homelessness. This partnership is so needed, we will only succeed by working together. This brings me to the Animal Services Advisory Board itself. When it was first resurrected, it struggled with legitimacy due to the way it was seated and implemented. We now have almost a whole new advisory board, and wow, they are phenomenal. They are knowledgeable, committed, and invested in making improvements for the animals, both inside and outside the shelter. I look forward to seeing all that they will accomplish. Of note, at that last meeting, a comment was made that our shelter wasn't the worst in the state, but there was certainly lots of room for improvement. I just want to emphasize that our goal should not be to just be better than the worst. We should be reaching to be the top shelter. With this new board composition and recent county leadership response, I have no doubt we will soon be working our way upwards. It was one year ago in August when I first addressed this leadership body about getting new leadership, shelter leadership, and first highlighted the conflict of interest between Commissioner Bragg and the previous shelter manager. Thankfully, subject to the findings of a state-led investigation, the previous shelter manager has now been relieved of her position. Now the real work begins as we work on building our shelter back better than it's been in a very long time. There is a newfound commitment to placing a premium on saving as many lives as possible through partnership, teamwork, and communication in the form of a long-sought-after volunteer program in a concerted effort to build rescue relationships rather than deter them. Now I want to revisit some things from the last Commissioners' meeting, and specifically with Commissioner Bragg's comments and actions. At the beginning of the meeting, she made a motion to have item G, Animal Services Board Bylaws Amendment, removed from the consent agenda. It was overruled by the majority vote. Then, when it came time to approve the consent agenda, she was the only Commissioner to vote against approving it. To my understanding, her argument was based on Section 7, Item 1 of Procedures for Meetings of the Franklin County Board of Commissioners. The documents she kept waving around and belligerently complained to the other Commissioners that it isn't being followed. For sure, Item 1 says, quote, "Each board will have seven members unless contrary to general statute," end quote. And the newly overhauled advisory board has nine seats, mostly because there are three Commissioners on it. What it doesn't say is that each board will only have seven members. The way I read it, it says each board must have at least seven, but there's nothing in Item 1 prohibiting more than seven. She also references this for the five-minute speaking rule for public comments. It is written in there, and I'll give it to her, that stipulation wasn't being followed for years. Of course, the last time this document was revised was in March of 2008, 16 years ago. Perhaps over time, past leaders had learned to value hearing from their constituents rather than trying to silence them. Lastly, Section 9, Item B states, quote, "These rules of procedure are directory and not mandatory." I take that to mean the leadership body has the latitude to veer from the document of procedures. I want to thank Commissioner Bragg for bringing this document to my attention, though, as it got me to search it out and read it. Funny enough, there was another document posted on the county website just below the Procedures manual. This other document is called the Resolution Adopting Code of Ethics. Its stated purpose is to establish guidelines for ethical standards of conduct for county Commissioners. There are many things I could highlight from this Code of Ethics, but I'll zero in on Canon 3, Item C. It states, quote, "County Commissioners shall not allow family, social, or other relationships to unduly influence their conduct or judgment in their role as county commissioner, and shall not lend the prestige of the office of county commissioner to advance the private interests of others." I would argue that Commissioner Bragg's hyper-focus on the Animal Services Advisory Board at that last meeting highlights a continued conflict of interest regarding animal shelter matters, even with her daughter's removal. Her behavior and comments come across as an angry mother, not Commissioner Bragg following the Code of Ethics. Makes me wonder how hard, through her words and actions, she will try to stand in the way of progress with the shelter. In my opinion, she should still recuse herself from animal services matters. Thank you.
Thank you. No late sign-ups, I don't think. I think we've heard from everybody. All right, that concludes our comments from the public. Next item is item number three, action items. Subchapter A, the Franklin-Grandville Vance Smart Start Incorporated Presentation. Linda Frederickson, Early Childhood Systems Director of FGB Smart Start Incorporated, will provide an update. FGB Smart Start is a nonprofit organization connecting and providing services for children from prenatal to age five.
Mrs. Ditten, board, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. I am Linda Frederickson. I am the Early Childhood Systems Director for Franklin-Grandville Vance Smart Start. I have been in this role since September, so I'll share with you what I usually share with groups. I may be the oldest new hire they had. I might not be able to outrun some of the other employees, but they certainly won't outwork me. So I have with me tonight Kamika Williams, and we're gonna be sharing a little bit about her role and what she does with public relations and research for our partnership. So one of the things we want to do, I'm hoping I can do this without, I told him I was a clicker, so I might click too much and see if I can get this to go. All right, I'm clicking, and I don't see it going anywhere. Do that one. Hey, that works great for me, thank you very much. Okay, so we want to let you know, when I go places and I talk about Franklin-Grandville Vance Smart Start, I have people say just a few things. One, they'll go, "I don't know anything about it." Or they will say, "Oh, that's one of those childcare centers." Or they'll say, "Oh, yeah, I know all about Head Start." Well, that's what I want to start with, what FGB Smart Start is not. We are not a for-profit agency, we are a nonprofit. We are not a childcare center. We are not Head Start. We are not Franklin-Grandville Vance Warren Opportunities. However, we do collaborate with these agencies and many other agencies. So I hope, if nothing else tonight, you'll remember what we are not, so that you won't think that that's what we are in the future. So Kamika's gonna share some things with you about what our local partnership does. As she's getting ready to go, which she's gonna share in the first one, so I'll let you go ahead with that.
Okay. Franklin-Grandville Vance is one of 75 actual partnerships within the county. Our basic goal is to make sure that we provide services to families who have children ages zero to five. The goal is to make sure that when children enter school, they're healthy and they're ready to learn, whether that's with programs dealing with dental, it could be programs for families whose children are not in formal childcare. As Dr. Frederickson mentioned, we do work with childcare programs, ensuring that they actually have the tools and the support necessary, so when the state comes to do their evaluation, they're ready. We make sure that families are equipped with various resources. All of our services are free of charge, we do not charge for anything that we provide. We make sure that families have exactly what they need so that children can thrive once they enter school. The thing that we really believe is to make sure that, this one, that the first five years are the most critical years of life. Before a child is even born, we work with families and young moms and dads to make sure that they have what they need to even cultivate a healthy pregnancy. And once the child is born, things, some of our programs, as we'll mention later on in the presentation, making sure that they read to the child, making sure that those children have access to reading materials. One of the goals is to make sure that when the child starts kindergarten, they have a wealth of library books that will be at their easy access. The things that we want to make sure is that we believe that every child has a right to thrive, not just survive, but to thrive. Children should not have to go to school worrying about if they're gonna be able to eat, where they're gonna be able to lay their head the next day or that night. We want to make sure that we provide them with those necessary resources that will allow them to learn and not worry.
And this just kind of shows the stages of development, and I'm gonna share more about stages of development a little bit. I'm excited, I didn't have any anticipation, I know who was gonna be here tonight other than the board, and you're the most important group I want to hear tonight, but I do want to say that I see several of our school board members here and people with the school for something else I believe they'll be talking about. But I've sat in lots of meetings, and you have too, in long hours, talking about school, but I do want to say that all of this really is so much before school ever starts. It actually starts when a mother is pregnant, and I'm gonna talk to you more about some brain development in a little bit.
Okay, so I'll go over some of our programs. One is called Assessing Higher Education. And what do we mean when we say assessing our higher education? In our childcare programs, we want to make sure that we have educated childcare teachers. So what we actually do, we have a program that will go out and help those teachers to further their education, whether it's with, you know, going to the community college, breaking down barriers. We're talking some of these teachers who may have not been in school for over 30 years, and there's a fear. So we have someone who actually goes out with them to help them navigate that transition into going back to school. We provide them with books, we provide them with laptops if need be. Behavioral specialists. So I'm not sure if you're really familiar with, but I know we all know that there are behavioral issues, and even in early childhood. So we have someone who actually goes out and works with the teacher, the staff, as well as the parents, to make sure that we mitigate and lower those behavioral issues that are in classroom, so again, children can focus and learn. Childcare consultant. This is someone who actually goes out and helps them with the health issues, whether it's making sure that there are no issues between spreading bloodborne illnesses or things of that nature, helping them to understand the importance of keeping medical records. So we have someone who goes out into all of the childcare programs and helps them to understand the health aspect when it comes to childcare. Childcare Resource Referral. That is a program that actually goes out, and we have outreach specialists, and they give the actual physical support to those staff members, making sure that they're dotting their i's, crossing their t's, so that when the state comes, they know what it is that they should be doing. There is an assessment that is done to make sure that they are within compliance and in line with everything that they need to have. Quality Childcare. Now, this is a grant program. So we offer funding to certain programs who are eligible to be able to purchase, whether it's materials or additional training. And they have more of a hands-on kind of technical support with the staff member. But like I said, their end goal is that they get money to enhance and improve their program, whether it's through training for the staff or whether it's enhanced materials. And training, pretty much, we offer trainings to all of our childcare providers, and it's not exclusive to our childcare providers, we offer it to the families as well. We have an amount of trainings, a vast amount of trainings that we offer, anything from how to prevent bloodborne illnesses, how to interact with parents and families, and we have a training calendar that we offer, and it's aware, and it's available for anyone who can go to our website. But those trainings, we keep at a minimum cost, sometimes they are free. All right, and some of the things, and I've already talked about, the things that we actually do, we go out and we observe. We don't just go into a program and say, "Okay, you're doing this, this, and this wrong." We observe and find out what's actually happening, and then we make a plan. Then we actually model the things that they should be doing within that classroom. And after that's done, we actually go back and get feedback, because we're not the experts when it comes to what's going on in the classroom. We're there to facilitate, help them to understand the things that they can enhance on, areas that they need to improve on. So we work together with the programs to make sure that they are doing the best they can to provide the best care for those children that's in their care.
And again, the things that she's sharing, we talk about classrooms, and sometimes we think about classrooms, we don't think about until school-age classrooms. All of these are zero to age five, whether it's a childcare center, or whether it's a home center, or we go in and we can help families, whether it's grandma keeping her grandchild, or someone else, and they just don't, we have resources that are free for that. So some of our current supported programs, because we do a three-year allocation cycle to come in and present, but the main thing that we look at is programs that are going to help that age, starting with mainly birth to age three, because the abundance, if you look right now, the research of this brain development, if the vocabulary, right and wrong, behavior, all of that goes to this age. So if we don't address it now, and we don't understand that, they're gonna be, the children are gonna be behind the ball when they do go to school, whether they go to public, charter, private, whatever. And so that's why this is so important, and I think sometimes this gets missed, because if we wait until the children get to school, then, you know, we're arguing about teachers or schools, or what school's better, what program's better, and if you would really go back and study the research, it happens here. So if we can help these children in childcare centers, in childcare homes, or even in their personal homes, to have programs, we will all benefit. You know, a lot of people talked about dropout prevention. It really starts before a child even begins school. So we want to make sure that the children are healthy, ready to go to school. And now Kamika's gonna share some more of our programs that we funded for the next three years.
Adolescent Parenting Program, and that's exactly what it sounds like. There are some young moms and dads who found themselves in situations where they are still in school and have become pregnant. So this program particularly works with those moms and dads to make sure that they still have the best support that they need to, first of all, finish school. So we want them to graduate, and then, once they graduate, we want them to go on and actually, whether it's a trade or go on to higher education. And not only that, we work with those young babies. So while we're working with the preteen moms or teen moms and dads, we're also working with the families. And who else is involved? Usually, maybe the grandparents. So it's a whole encompassing situation that we work with to make sure that that child has the best ability to succeed. Like I said, we don't want them to say, "Okay, I'm pregnant now, I can't graduate high school." That's not the case. So we work with the entire family to make sure that they graduate, and the children that they have have the best start possible.
And the pictures you see are actual pictures of young people that have gone through the program, and all of those have graduated high school, many of them have gone on, and we've even had someone master's degree. But without the support that they were given, I don't know that that would be the case. So I also want to share, next, somebody asked me about this when I walked in, said they needed, where's Scott? There he is. He wanted some Dolly Parton books. So many of you have heard about Dolly Parton and Imagination Library. For many years, Franklin-Grandville Vance funded that for our counties before the state even got involved, because we knew the importance of getting those books in the hand, and it has nothing to do with income. Anybody, any child that's born, as soon as they are born, they can apply for this and get a book every month. And if you want to know who that handsome little fella is up there in that picture, that is my grandson, and he was three months old when he got his first book. I filled out the form the day he was born online, you can do it online, and I want to say that Franklin County takes part and does more participation in this than any of our three counties. So they get a book every month, and then they get that final book right before they start kindergarten. So if you know anybody, whether, you know, that has a child zero, you know, to about four now, I would encourage you to do this, because they are great books. That was The Little Engine That Could was his very first book. One of my biggest things that I'll be working with is family engagement. So that Early Childhood Systems Director, that only means working with So that Early Childhood Systems Director, that only means working with multiple systems, whether that system is within our agency, outside of our agency, or in our counties, to do things with families. And so whether that family is in a childcare center, like I said, or whether they come, and so that is what we try to do. These are some pictures from some of the activities that we have done that have had great participation, and there's one, you know, showing from the different counties. I'm very pleased to say that we are having these resource centers. So the resource centers started out where some of our technical assistance representatives would go, and they might take something that a childcare center needed, math manipulatives, or they needed science, and they would check it out to them and then check it back in. But we need to get those in the hands of families. So we do have Family Resource Center. The first one, and the longest open one, is actually at the Henderson office, which is located right near the hospital, and you could see pictures there with that. Then we opened one at the Granville County Resource Center in Oxford at the campus of the Masonic Home for Children, and we had a grant with Granville County United Way to do that. And I'm excited because, and I said coming very soon, because Kristin was very important that I had to get this to her like a week or two ago. So at the time, I didn't know, but we already have it, and I didn't know they were going to be here. So I do want to thank Franklin County Schools. You may have heard one of my passionate pleas about the schools in another comment, but I started school at Franklinton Elementary in 1969. I went back to be a principal there. And now, our Resource Center for Families across the county will be located in one of the modular units there. And this will be a center where we can do trainings, I can do small groups with parents, they can come in, and I have a great resources that I'm working with. I'm writing multiple grants, so that parents could come in if they want to check out this little clear backpack about how to, you know, the first stages of reading and writing, they can do it. Again, nothing related to income and no cost. So that is very, very exciting that we're going to have that, and I'll probably invite you off to the open house when we do that. Okay? Another program that we have, we work very closely with the school systems and any other school agencies for kindergarten transitions, because kindergarten is just not one transition, it's multiple transitions. So it's a major milestone, and we have to work with them, not just making sure that they know ABCs and counting, how to talk with each other, how to speak, how to do things in an orderly manner. So Kindergarten Transitions is another program that we fund, and Amy Oakes oversees that program. And Camico's going to share on another program we sponsor for Franklin County.
So Franklin County NC Pre-K is what we call it. And in Franklin County, we have five public school classrooms, four Head Start classrooms, and three private childcare classrooms. And what we do is we actually go in and work with the Pre-Ks in each one of these entities, making sure, again, I think I mentioned before, an assessment. There is an assessment that they have to adhere to. So we have someone on staff who actually goes in and works with these teachers to make sure that they're falling in line with the assessment, because they have to meet certain criteria in order to keep their status as whether it's a four-star or a five-star. And we'll talk about that a little bit later. But one of the things that we make sure is that we go in and we assess not just the teacher, the classroom, the materials, interaction between the teacher and the children, as well as interactions between the children and the children. So there is someone who goes into each one of these particular classrooms and makes sure that they are keeping at their high standard of requirements.
And these five public school classrooms, four Head Start and three private, are above and beyond what the school system is already doing. Anytime you have an opportunity to support having Pre-Ks in all of our schools, I would encourage you to do that.
All right. So parents as teachers, as we all know, parents are guardians, whether it's grandma, aunt, whomever, is our child's first teacher. And there are situations where maybe the families cannot afford childcare or choose not to place their child in childcare. So what does that mean? Does that child, you know, get left behind? No. We have a program that goes into the homes and works with the parent, guardian, aunt, or whomever, and the children to make sure that they are still on track, that they're getting that necessary support that they need, so still, once they enter school, they're ready to learn, that they're not behind the eight ball. So even though they may not be in childcare for whatever reason, we still have a program that will go out, offer resources, give them materials, give them activities, and help them to engage with their child on how to use those materials and activities. Our next one is Support for Fatherhood Involvement, and this is fairly new. A lot of times, we talk about, you know, parents and so forth, you know, unfortunately, fathers are sometimes left out of that loop. And this is a program that helps work with fathers to make sure that, hey, you are just as important as the mom. We want to make sure that you stay involved with your children, whether you are with the mom or not. We want to facilitate so that way you have an intricate portion and playing with your child, whether it's, you know, taking them out for the weekend, whether it's just coming home, you know, helping them with homework or helping them with activities. We want to make sure that fathers stay involved with their children. And so this is a program that lets fathers know that you are still important and you are necessary to your child's life.
A lot of you have seen little free libraries around. That is one thing that we support. The ones that we have put out across the three counties, we go by and continually fill them up. Even though the idea is, you know, take a book or put one back, we make sure that there's books in there, and we actually have different teams of people that will travel around to fill those areas up. Okay, we gave you one on expenditures. Our total expenditures for 2023 was $3,480,187, and you can see the breakdown of how that's spent for Making Childcare Affordable, Childcare and Education Quality, Family Support, Program Coordination Evaluation, Health and Safety, and General Administration. But really, what we get to do a lot of the things with is from our community funds. FGV brings money into our community. We get $2,782,088 from the state, $585,842 from federal grants, $60,941 for other income, and some of that other income is listed below, United Way and Foundation Grants, County Government Corporate Support, Private Donations, Ducky Derby Timeout Tuesday, participant training fees, which I think the max I've seen is $10. I think they're $7, $10, $20, if it's, maybe one of the higher ones. But we must invest in our young children and families, because our children are worth it. So one of the things I wanted to share is the funds, you are one of the three counties that, I believe it's $5,000, that you usually give to Franklin Graham Vance Smart Start, and we really appreciate that, and we want to say thank you. And some of the examples of what we have done with that money is that fund literacy, those books, we get them donated, but we make sure we keep the little free libraries going. We do literacy programs, sometimes it's in public places or different areas, resource library materials, like it's going to be in those three, the three resource libraries. And most recently, we also gave some of that money back to Franklin County specifically for the mobile library with Michelle. I've been meeting with her, and we've got some really good things. She was extremely active, your county media specialist with Smart Start in Wake County. And so I've met with her, and we've got some really good plans to do some things with our county. So I want to say thank you, because that's what we get to use that money for.
And again, so one of our biggest fundraisers is called Timeout Tuesday. What is Timeout Tuesday? And as you can see, these are pictures of your very own Franklin County natives, residents. What we actually do is we kind of put them in timeout, so to speak. And if they want to get out of timeout, they have to raise a certain amount of money. So basically, they will call their friends and say, hey, you know, could you please donate to Franklin Graham Vance? These, you know, these funds will go back into the programs that will help our children to make sure that they're healthy and ready to learn. So as you can see, it, like I said, Timeout Tuesday is just what it says. It's a fundraiser that we have done since 2006, and we do it in all three counties. And so the local citizens agreed to get into timeout. They're usually a program in each county where they must call their friends and associates and give donations. We asked them to raise a minimum of $250. This year, we had a competition between Franklin County and Granville County, who was going to raise the most money. And I do believe that Franklin County actually succeeded at that. I'm not quite sure how much, but I think the last count we were at.
Well, Vance started it, and then Grant, Franklin went up and more than doubled theirs, and then Granville, they had some people at the last minute trying to put some money in, because they didn't want that to be built. But we usually make about $3,500 on that activity. We made almost $15,000 this year between the competition between the three counties. And I can tell you, your Franklin County reps are already on it for next year. Now, our next event's coming up is the 21st of September. It's our Ducky Derby. We do have this, it serves all three counties, but we do it on Gonnit Street and Henderson. The firemen have been helping us with that. Ducks are put into a cement mixer, they're released on the street, the fireman hose down the street, all the kids, these are real shots of the activity there, and they're $5 a duck, and so that's our fundraiser. So you can go online to look at that. But I do want to make sure you know that we didn't have any idea this was happening, because we're actually traveling around to the three counties. So we've already been to Vance County, Franklin tonight, and then we're going to go to Granville. But in between doing this, the governor has officially recognized Smart Start Month. And so I'm going to be leaving with Kristin to share the proclamation from the governor that it's Smart Start Month. And so we will, it ties right in with what we're doing. This is the official proclamation, but I'm going to leave a copy. We just want you to know that there are things in the community, yes, there are some of our programs you have to qualify for, some, you just, the only qualification is having a child zero to five. And we want to work with you, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Did any board members got any comments, questions?
I actually have two questions. I know that one of your goals and objectives, I just want to say your presentation was great, by the way. One of your goals and objectives, basically the main goal and objective is to provide services for families ages zero through five years old. I do have a question. I also, one of your, one of your other bullets was to work to cultivate healthy families. For pregnant mothers, does that also include, well, indigent mothers, does that also include maybe access to resources for maternal health care? Yes. There are different ways that we, like I said, if we don't have it in-house, we will make sure that they get those necessary resources. We work very closely with the health departments in all three counties, making sure that we are aware of what services are available to moms and, you know, lactating moms, whatever the case may be. So we have the information they need only to ask. And like I said, we're out there trying to make sure that families are aware of the various resources that are available to them.
Thank you. And my second, final question is, in regards to your program, parents as teachers, one of your bullets under that program was to prevent child abuse and neglect. Does Smart Start partner with the local DSS, Burning at Light program?
Yes, we do. We've had several situations. One of the programs that we also do is called Triple P. We've had parents who may have had to come through the program because they've had issues with parenting, but we do work very closely with the Department of Social Services, those guardian and lighter, to make sure that we help prevent those issues. That's the overall goal. We also do trainings for our childcare providers and families on what to look for if there's suspected abuse and neglect, and how to properly report that.
Ms. London, I do want to add to that, because one of the things about networking is sharing, and I'm going to tell you a little story, I mean, and it's not a makeup, it's a real situation that happened. We also have a Safe Kids program, and the Safe Kids program is anybody that needs a car seat, like, and we have people that get children in the middle of the night, and we had one. Jones County DSS brought three children, four and under, ages four and under, three girls, one autistic, to Vance County. And they came with the family. The family, you know, was under the impression that they were told they'd be bringing vouchers so they could start school. Well, they were going to get a voucher, but it wasn't going to happen for weeks. So the person lost their job. Then their job, then it caused them to get behind on their rent. They came to us because they had to have car seats, and we gave them car seats. Now, we don't just give car seats. Our staff goes to three days of training so that we can go back and train them in like an hour or two how to properly use the car seats, because every car is different, every age car seat's different, and we're not going to just give something to somebody and they go out and the child's injured. But we gave the car seat, and then the mother came to me, the foster mother, and came in to me and said, she just broke down in my office. She says, I've been to social services, I've been to Franklin Vance Warren Opportunities, I've been everywhere, and people just keep telling me to go somewhere else. So I called our executive director, Dr. Tony Cosardian, who is a wonderful man, if you don't know him, he's a fine, fine gentleman. And I had him come in my office, and I said, let her tell her story, and she did. And so she sat with me, and now she and I on speed dial. I helped to register her kids for school, I helped her get to those agencies, because one day she called and she says, I'm sitting here and nobody's at the door. And I'm like, no, you're not, because I'm here and I don't see you. And I said, describe what you're near, because when people, things like that happen in the middle of the night, and you all of a sudden go from no children to three under the age, you know, four and under, so that's a real story where we network. We didn't have all the programs, but I made sure that, you know, I walked her through that, and that's what our goal is to do with any families that come to us. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for your presentation. I echo that statement. Very well done. All right, moving along to Action Item B. Mr. Nathan Page, Youngsville Town Manager, will offer a presentation to the board on the Youngsville Bypass.
Is there another presentation loaded on here? I'm sure you guys have the slides, but... While that's being set up, I just want to say, Chair, Board, Commissioners, thank you so much for inviting the town of Youngsville here to speak before you guys. As we all know, the most important thing is the future, and it's hard to go between two groups of people who are presenting on children and talk about anything else. But one thing that I think a lot of people feel strongly about is traffic, and you heard from one of our residents, Mr. Rizzo, who spoke about his experience on downtown Youngsville's Main Street a few months ago. I just want to say thank you to all of you, most of you I have had extended conversations with about the bypass, and I appreciate the partnership that the town of Youngsville and the county of Franklin have had on this throughout history, and I'll touch briefly on it through the presentation. The first slide that I wanted to throw up was a slide, just familiarizing folks who are less familiar with it than you guys are, of what the bypass project is and why it matters so much. Main Street in Youngsville is the east-west connection there in the middle. The railroad track divides all of Youngsville right smack dab in the middle. Half of it's on the east side, half of it's on the west side. And what the bypass would do is it's four sections here. The railroad crossing connects to Rolling Meadows, connects to Cedar Creek, and connects to Highway 96 on the south side. I'll come back to this slide at the end, but I just wanted to have the picture that the bypass will go from 96 to 96 at the end. The project that identified the bypass as being an important piece was the 2014 Northeast Area Study, which started with CAMPo, the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, where you guys have an appointed member, the town of Youngsville does, and they attend. Unfortunately, the meetings were recently moved to Cary rather than downtown Raleigh, so it takes another hour to get to than it did before. But it called out in 2014 that 20% of the truck traffic is causing safety problems and creating operational issues at key intersections. The long-term solution is, of course, the construction of a bypass. In 2017, the county partnered with the town of Youngsville and worked on a locally administered project program, I'll refer to this later as the LAP program. These are funded and administered by small jurisdictions with federal and local funds with no state money. These are federal funds that are used and allocated for small local projects. In 2019, the town reached out to NCDOT with concerns on truck traffic and requested to identify alternate routes for the trucks to avoid the two blocks of Main Street from US 1A to Cross Street. In 2022, the Rolling Meadows neighborhood was approved by the Youngsville Board of Commissioners if the developer would be willing to build the portion of the bypass from Fleming to Cedar Creek. That was a condition of approval for the zoning approval in 2022. Subsequent to that, the town of Youngsville reached out and asked for assistance from Franklin County. Just a point here, crashes have been increasing on Main Street, even while Main Street is at maximum capacity. Not every Not every year is identified on the graph to the right, NCDOT doesn't do traffic counts every year, but this shows that crashes are going up even while the volume on Main Street is not increasing. The town entered into an option to purchase bypass right-of-way from the Moss Brothers, and the negotiated fee was forty-five thousand dollars an acre. The town added turn lanes to the intersection of Mount, uh, Main Street and North Cross Street to the tune of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, with support from the North Carolina General Assembly, particularly Representative Winslow and Senator Barnes were the ones who fought for these funds for the town. The town again reached out to NCDOT in the fall of twenty-two, made the same request and then met with the division engineer Brandon Jones and at the time, the district engineer Scott Wheeler. The town applied for a, I'm going to try and get all these acronyms, Federal Railroad Administration Railroad Crossing Elimination Grant in the spring of 2023. And we cooperated with the North Carolina Department of Transportation Integrated Mobility Division. Unfortunately, the grant was not awarded. The town self-funded a thirty percent design of the Cedar Creek Road, of the Cedar Creek straightening from Tarboro up to just north of Atlas Drive. In 2023, the project was completed for the LAP project, and this was the water and sewer line work that you all paid for through an interlocal that helped the infrastructure in downtown Youngsville. In 2023, the county and the, the town of Youngsville met with the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization and requested that the Metropolitan Transportation Plan be amended. This is a big deal, because for the first time, it made the bypass, as the Youngsville Board of Commissioners saw it, eligible for federal funds. The town adopted the Comprehensive Land Use and Transportation Plan, otherwise known of as Youngsville 2050, and a little of my thunder was stolen by Mr. Rizzo earlier. We won the best comprehensive plan in the entire country with this, and that was announced just a few months ago at the National Planning Conference in Minneapolis, that our planning director Lucy Garcia had the opportunity to go and attend. Youngsville reached out to Franklin County and asked for assistance, and there was a resolution that was passed, but unfortunately was passed after funding allocation had already been made. The town again reached out to NCDOT for truck traffic concerns, and we had meetings, we walked the site with the state traffic engineer Brian Mayhew, and then followed up and followed up and followed up and followed up. There was a hotspot analysis of the southeastern portion of the bypass. The town worked with CAMPo to find an analysis of the potential alignments to connect on that southeastern side of town to try and make it the most cost-effective piece. In February of 2024, the town acted on the option to purchase more than twelve acres of land for more than a half million dollars of town funds. All of this was in the location for the new bypass. It was all a hundred feet wide, very narrow strips, or some intersection improvements, but all of it was within the identified corridor. CAMPo, NCDOT, and the town met and talked about funding mechanisms to receive federal funds for fiscal year 2026 in February of this year. It was actually determined that the town couldn't move fast enough to make a request for federal year 2026 because of all the hurdles that were required for applying for those funds. And so the town is targeting federal funding year 2027 to apply for funds for the grant. At the town of Youngsville budget retreat, the primary infrastructure goal of the Youngsville Board of Commissioners was the construction of the bypass. The commissioners discussed a higher property tax rate to expedite the construction of the bypass. In March of this year, an email was sent to the county manager requesting that the town of Youngsville could come and make this presentation. Thank you for allowing us to do so today. The town reached out for a fourth meeting with NCDOT in May of this year, and NCDOT identified potential alternate routes that will require a resolution of support from the Franklin County Board of Commissioners. The preferred alternative by the Youngsville Board of Commissioners was to have truck traffic stay on US one and move on ninety-eight, both of which have been identified already as truck routes, and it would just remove it from those two blocks of Highway ninety-six that are downtown Youngsville. In April, NCDOT, CAMPo, and the town met and identified the future cross-section that the, the parties would be responsible for. And you see one half of it here, which would be what the Rolling Meadows portion would build, but they would dedicate the right-of-way for all of it so that when there were federal funds available, it could be used to build the whole piece. It took until just recently to finish the billing for the, the Main Street LAP project. We are finally at the last invoice, and so even though this project was actually completed in August of 2023, y'all see how long federal funds take on the tail end and on the front end. In their 2025 budget, the town of Youngsville accepted a recommendation from the town manager for a tax rate of point zero zero five five, which was above the revenue neutral rate, that allocated an additional four hundred thousand dollars, just under ten percent of our total annual budget, towards the next steps on the bypass. We've also been working on ways that we can realign the intersection of Highway ninety-six and US one A. As y'all are aware, a Youngsville police officer was seriously wounded after a FedEx truck failed to yield the right-of-way to them at this intersection, and the town has proposed alternate routes. We're still in consultation with NCDOT, but we're trying to get something done about this intersection, which is the westernmost intersection of the bypass. The hotspot analysis was initiated by CAMPo at a request from the town of Youngsville. It changed the alignment of the bypass from Tarboro south to Highway ninety-six, and it showed that more than seventy percent of the trips on Main Street don't stop in Youngsville, they're through trips that could use alternate routes. The town then allocated funds for the National Environmental Protection Act approvals and the, enough of the percentage of a design to get to where we could apply for federal funds for construction funds. And the anticipated cost of that was two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, with, of course, additional right-of-way costs, as the Moss Brothers didn't own every parcel along the route. There's a few others that the town will still have to work on. Some of you are aware, five points intersection, that's the current intersection of Highway ninety-six, US one A, Main Street, College Street, all the same thing, right there at the Speedway, was initially recommended by the Technical Coordinating Committee of CAMPo to be awarded points. However, CAMPo rescored the allocation, and at the, at the executive board meeting, they were told that it no longer met the criteria to be funded, and so has been bumped till The town's investments in transportation to date, I won't read the whole slide to you, but it's been more than a million dollars, it's more than half of our tax revenue. This is just on the bypass and, and a few paving projects. So I pull up the slide again that shows the whole piece. The railroad crossing piece at the northern portion of it is almost certainly going to be funded by the next grant that Integrated Mobility of, the Integrated Mobility Division of NCDOT gets. They have told us that their money is now run out in Wake Forest, and as y'all are aware, Wake Forest and Youngsville now have town limits that touch, so the next bit of funding will get the S-line through here and will build that overpass at the railroad crossing. The Rolling Meadows portion shown here in blue is that piece that if we could get some water allocation for that neighborhood, that neighborhood would be able to build with private funds. The green portion there for Cedar Creek that's north-south is what the Youngsville Board of Commissioners is working on trying to build as quickly as possible. And then on the south side, you have that Highway ninety-six last connection that will connect it back from Tarboro to ninety-six, and that piece would be built eventually with NCDOT STIP funds, State Transportation Improvement Plan funds. I think that's what the acronym is. So the town of Youngsville asks, the town of Youngsville would like to request that the Franklin County Board of Commissioners adopt the Small Area Transportation Plan that was the hotspot analysis, that you will allow staff to trade unusable property one for one with impor, impacted property owners within the right-of-way, that the Board of Commissioners would budget for a portion of construction expenses in fiscal year 2027 for a million dollars, which will spit, split the cost of the local match with the town of Youngsville's one million. That's a million dollars from the two thousand five hundred residents of the town of Youngsville, and a request for a million dollars from the seventy-five thousand residents of Franklin County. That would then leverage for ten million dollars in federal funds. Pass the resolution in support of the alternative truck alignment for, uh, alert, alternative alignment for the truck route on US one and ninety-eight, and allocate water for Rolling Meadows to build one-third of the bypass through private investment. And with that, I open myself to any questions that you guys may have, as long as you're willing to allow me to defer to the expert in the room, Mayor Flaherty.
All right. Any board members have any comments, questions?
I have a question. Nathan, thank you for your presentation. In regards to the, the graph that you showed us about crashes, is that based on like a weekly basis, or is it a monthly?
Sorry, it's annual.
Annual, okay.
So the, the graph on the right is the average daily traffic on Main Street, sometimes reported as the AADT, and, and those are the traffic counts, you've driven over those pneumatic tubes, your car goes bump, bump, those count how many vehicles are driving on a road at a particular time. On the left, the downtown vehicle crashes by year are showing how many crashes have been reported to the police and have had some sort of incident report written on it. So if somebody just taps into you, the officers may not always report that information to the state. This is something where there was more than, I don't remember the threshold, but it's, it's maybe two thousand five hundred dollars of the damage that's required to be reported to the state, or unfortunately, pedestrian incidents where pedestrians are transported by ambulance.
And on that graph where there's like an increase, is that one, I don't even have my glasses, God only knows where they are. Is that 2023? That's why I'm waiting.
We're seeing 2021, 22, or 2023.
Okay.
That right here is the far right, the downtown vehicle crashes by year, where there were thirty-eight crashes in downtown. That's including five points of problem and twenty-three.
Thank you.
I have a question. The CAMPo Executive Board comment that you made, so, help me understand that a little bit more. Were we kinda already, or we, you all, were kinda in the, in the approved column, were a better positioned column, and the executive board made the decision?
So that was for the five points intersection, not the bypass of the whole?
Ah, okay.
But what, what NCDOT said was that they had made a mistake on their calculations that deprioritized reduced conflict intersections. So that would mean intersections that like had a grade separation or something to that effect. And so the new scoring system reduced the scores for intersections that were just lights like ours, and increased the scoring for intersections like US one.
And also, just like the comment that, I think Mr. Rizzo said it very well, the Youngsville team, I'm going to call you all, have been killing. I mean, this has been a journey that's been going on for six years, if I have a good recollection. And so it takes, it takes everybody to make this happen, but you all have made some significant headway. And I think patience is persevering along with, you know, probably just a good teamwork. And so I'm, I'm a, I'm excited to hear it and see it, and I appreciate you being willing to take the time to put all this together to help us see the bigger picture. I think that math that you had with the different colors of the segment, the proposed bypass, is really important for the community to see the potential of what you all are working on. It's one thing to talk about something, people see something like this, then it starts to, to like click, they, the visual picture really helps them see it. And I'm excited about the opportunity to, to get a better traffic pattern in that area, which is much seen. I realize that, you know, it's not all going to happen at the same time the bulldozers move, but if we can get the bulldozers moving, that gives us the leverage and the attention to get hopefully a bigger following higher up or more support from the state and federal government. So thank you to town of Youngsville's team for making this happen. Really is, it's amazing. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Any comment, questions? Well, thank you very much for your presentation. Well done. I look forward to working with you. I'm also a member on that CAMPo board, so maybe we can get together on that and get something moving quicker instead of waiting longer. Anyway, thank you very much. All right, moving to our action item number, item C. Franklin County School Needs Based Public School Building Fund Grant. Dr. Rhonda Shuler, Franklin County School Superintendent, and Dr. Larry Webb, Chief of Auxiliary Services, will present information on a grant opportunity for the Franklin County School. Come to the podium, please.
Good evening, Chairman Foye, Madam Manager, and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We've been here before, and we're, we're back again with a smile to talk about our needs-based grant. With us tonight, Dr. Shuler, our superintendent, Ms. Coley, our chief of finance, our board chairman, Ms. Champion, board member Ms. Sales, and board member Mr. Piper. I believe I got everybody that, members here. Thank you again for the opportunity. I am Dr. Larry Webb, as you heard, chief of auxiliary services. I've been working and living with this grant opportunity for about four years now, and we, we come here again to ask for your partnership on that. So I probably need my presentation, so if you could help me with that, I would certainly appreciate it. I needed to do that before I started talking, I'm sorry. In years past, this grant has been, the last year, for example, it was announced in October...
Is it that one?
Yes. It was announced in October for November application drop with a January deadline. It was announced on the last day of July this year, the application opened on August first, and it is due September the thirteenth. So, but that's okay, we're ready. So, what is a needs-based public school capital fund grant? It's an opportunity that provides a grant-based funding for counties according to the, the new criteria, is assessed every year. Franklin County is eligible to apply for this grant with a fifteen percent local match. If you've been here for previous conversations, it's been for a five percent local match. I believe you have the documentation that shows the, the graph that the state has given us, and we've learned that that grant criteria is zero, five, fifteen, twenty-five, and thirty-five percent. So for an adjusted market value of taxable real property between ten billion and twenty billion, we are at fifteen percent match. That does change the amount that we've asked for as we come to you today. So the maximum eligibility for an elementary school, a part of this grant, is forty-two million dollars. Fifteen percent of that would be six point three million dollars. That is the minimum. But we've learned and heard that a larger contribution is believed to increase our chances of receiving this award. As I mentioned, this application is due by September the thirteenth. So county debt and tax generators must meet criteria, tax generation must meet the criteria, and we do. You're seeing there the three criteria set forth by the state. When we first started this conversation, those numbers were thirty million, forty million, and fifty million. Each of them is going to put twelve million dollars from the state as, as funding opportunities. So now, forty-two million for an elementary school, fifty-two million for a max for a middle school, sixty-two million max for a high school. We are discussing an elementary school, so we're talking about forty-two million. Franklin County Schools is eligible to apply for this grant with a fifteen percent local match. By their definition, the state's definition, this match must come from county funds, other non-state funds, or a combination of these sources. Priority on the rubric is given to tier one and tier two counties. We qualify for that as well. Franklin County Head School, and this is one of the actual, one of the checkboxes, one of the criteria, we've not received a grant the last three years, so that's part of the scoring as well. And so we do meet, and that's again on the eligibility document that I believe you have, we do, we are qualified to apply for this grant. We completed a feasibility study in 2021 to look at the possibilities of, of building a replacement school on the current campus of Franklin Elementary School, and it is... And it is, is very doable, is very possible, it's a very good idea, and our board is very excited about the opportunity to do that, especially since, as you'll see later, the forty-two million dollars, the, the state funding cannot be used to purchase land and it can't be used for administrative facilities. We've been not asking for that. We actually have the land, so this would all be construction of a school. That results of that study provided a solid foundation to say, yes, a competitive grant application for the replacement school building is appropriate. So some ask, some questions you may ask, I've tried to anticipate them. Uh, the maximum potential funding for an elementary, uh, school award is forty-two million dollars. That's what we're asking for. What is the required match? This is as part of our partnership. Uh, the required match for us this year is now fifteen percent. Again, that's a six point three million dollar minimum, but we have been informed that increased match increases our potential and chances of receiving an award. So we're requesting a ten million dollar match. Again, that's if we get the grant, then the ten million dollars would be part, would come into play, not before. Uh, is the, this, uh, FES replacement school a qualifying project? Yes, it is. What are the funding limitations? I mentioned this a moment ago, the funding cannot be used to purchase property or used for administrative property. Is there a required timeline for project completion? No, there's not, but construction, but construction work must begin within twenty-four months of a grant award. So we timed that out and looked, you know, with the design phase being anywhere from six months to a year, uh, we believe we can, uh, break, uh, break ground within twenty-four months of the award. Can the design cost be included in funding? Yes, it can. Does Franklin County qualify in regards to debt tax rates? Yes, we do. In fact, we could qualify all the way up to thirty-five percent. At thirty-six percent, we no longer qualify. And as you see on the, the, the document that we shared with you about county eligibility, the ones that are highlighted are not eligible anymore. Their tax rate, uh, rate, their number is over thirty-six percent. So let's see where it was, I guess. Uh, what is the total North Carolina amount that will be rewarded for all schools this, this year in the twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five school year? Two hundred and fifty-eight million dollars statewide for this grant. Is this a competitive grant process? Yes, it is. We are competing with every other school system who completes the paperwork and, and has a match with their, uh, the relationship with their commissioners and moves forward. Uh, our, our local match range is from zero to thirty-five percent. And you'll see on the chart, there are some counties that qualify for a zero match. We were five until this year and now we're at fifteen. And it goes all the way up to thirty-five. All right, so here's the timeline and there's a number, I, there's a date I don't have for you, but I'll tell you. I'll tell you what the date is that we don't have. So I mentioned this earlier, September, July thirtieth, we were notified, here comes the grant on August first, the grant arrived, the application arrived. Uh, September third, that's today, we seek your endorsement and partnership and a commitment for the ten million dollar match as we apply for this grant. It is due with the signature of our board chair and our, uh, the chair of the county commissioners by September thirteenth. We are on go to have that application completed, if approved, I'll put it in Ms. King's hand tonight for the, for the, uh, uh, chairman to peruse. Uh, when I, when a date we have not been provided, what is the date of the award? We've not been told that. Uh, in previous years, there's been a finite date. They didn't always get that date, but this year they haven't even given us a date. But as I mentioned to you earlier, we are several months earlier on this application process than we've been every other year. It was late spring, the first time we, we did this. So our request, our, for your consideration, is, uh, to, to consider a ten million dollar match for this forty-two million dollar grant. I want to clarify, that ten million dollars is in addition to the forty million, that forty-two million that the state will provide us, providing us fifty-two million dollars if everything is awarded properly, fifty-two million dollars to, uh, begin the process of construction of a replacement Franklinton Elementary School. So, um, that is what we're asking of you to consider the ten million dollar match. And if you do so, we are ready to move forward with the application. So that's the information that I've prepared for you. If you have questions, I will do my best to answer them or find someone that can.
Any board member questions?
Okay. Wait, are you gonna, um, tear down the school that's there now and place the new school where the new, the old school is or how are you thinking of placing it?
So that decision has not been made as far as the future of the existing buildings. Um, those buildings are raging, range in age from nineteen fifty-three to near two thousand. Um, we would evaluate the usage of those buildings. The conversation in the, um, feasibility study was not where the ma- the main campus is now. It was across the street where the playground. There's another field that's available, but it's slightly below grade. So the easy move would be to build across the street, build a school there, new playgrounds there, that type of thing.
That's the street that goes up Howard Harris all the way to.
It backs, yes.
Across the street.
Yes, right across, if you walk out of Franklin, current Franklin Elementary and keep on walking.
And there's no buildings on that, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
And that, a- after, after construction, uh, that's a conversation the board will have of what to use, how to use it, how to utilize those facilities and, uh, uh, again, we've only got preliminary sketches, so we haven't done a design on that yet. Uh, that's, that's also a cost of the.
There's a lot of land.
Yes.
A lot of area, you could, you could just put it over there and not even have to, you know, you could keep kids in school until it's built.
And that is a, you, very wise man, that is exactly what we had in mind.
Yeah.
And while moving day, just walk across the street.
Yeah, walk across the street and then you can tear the whole one down and, well, whatever, what you need to do.
Yes, ma'am, that is.
Some of it's probably usable, but I'm sure I'll, I'll.
Yes, ma'am, that was our conversation and you, you nailed it right on the head.
Yeah. My other question is, um, and I wanted to ask him, was there any other money that we had to make up that ten million or we just fund the whole ten?
So this would end up being typically a borrowing for this amount of money because the, the estimate for the school is more than forty-two million. Is that right?
Correct.
Estimate to construct the school is more than the grant. So whatever that excess is plus the match would be money that typically we would be, would not find that fund balance, uh, we would use that, uh, do a borrowing.
And our last number, uh, estimate from our, um, engineering partner is about two years old and that was a, a forty-five million dollar estimate. So we're sure that's gone up. And that was, uh, that was for a, um, the entirety turnkey project. So we're sure that's gone up. I, I think we would use every bit as Ms. Kent, as Ms. Denton alluded to, every bit and more of both, both those fund sources. Maybe not more, maybe not more.
Right. Any other commissioners?
I have a question or two, Mr. Chairman. So this grant that we are applying for, is this the same grant that was applied for, you said, a year or two ago? It's the same grant, we're just going back at it again and going for it again?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I noticed it, cause I looked at that, cause I was frustrated why we didn't get it, cause I thought that was a huge opportunity for us. And so I did some digging in back when we didn't get that. And, um, part of what I learned is that, is my understanding of it is, is that this grant is set out to help counties that need to kind of consolidate some old campus and a couple like old schools that are community schools and build one new one that's more centralized and bring things together? Is that your understanding of some of the?
That's an element of it.
It's an element of it.
It's an element. For example, it, a rubric is the, the, the term we use is, uh, check this, check that, point for each one. One possible rubric is the construct, the, uh, combining of school, there's money to close the school. Each one of those are point giving, uh, actions. The same thing is not getting a grant for the last three years was, is a point giving. Um, being a tier one school.
Right.
Being a tier two school.
Sure.
So that's part of the list.
Yes, I recognize that, but what I was told from the powers that be in places closer to Raleigh and in Raleigh was really what this grant is set up to do. Its real true underlying purpose is to help communities build a new larger school and get rid of older aging facilities and create more efficiency in their school system by having a bigger cafeteria that feeds, you know, a lot more children, uh, type deal and, and be able to kind of help counties move in that direction. Because when you were telling me forty-five thousand or sharing the forty-five million, I'm sorry, forty-five million, I'm thinking in my head, my goodness, they built that whole Franklinton High School for like twenty-something million dollars. And I'm going, how in the thunder is an elementary school that houses, you know, six hundred kids-ish? I mean, I, I don't have your numbers, but in my head, six hundred kids, when a high school's good for twelve or thirteen hundred with the potential to gain another three or four hundred or so, whatever, right? That, that design was made, that we could grow it. And how much that has gone up? It's like, in my head, I'm going, how, how in debt can we get to build now? Because we could have built three elementary schools back then.
Correct.
For the money we're spending on one today. And you sure it'd be, what, twenty years old, fifteen, fifteen years old?
Which school?
Franklinson High School was happening.
Two thousand twelve, so.
Okay, so ten, so not only ten years, twelve years old, right?
Yes.
Twelve years old and we could have built two or three times as much. And so I think that's important, but the understanding that I got was this grant really underlined motivation for, for approving it is for us to consolidate two into one. And then if, 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 if the applicants aren't going that direction, that's a big thumbs down from the powers that be. And I appreciate the Rubik piece of it, but I do know that there, there is some subjectivity in, in that process. And so are, are we willing, as a school system, willing to, to accept or take that notion and put it into play in order to get, uh, forty-two million dollars from, from this grant? Or is that a? So this grant would, this grant wouldn't, this grant has nothing to do with basically consolidating or bringing? I'm sorry, you can or you can't? I'm sorry.
You can.
You can? Okay. Just replacement only?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's good.
And that's what I was gonna say. When we look at the list, longingly look at the list of who got the, the award, we don't see a lot of consolidation. We don't see a lot of closing.
There's what, maybe ten schools, roughly ten communities?
A little over ten last year.
Last year.
About the same, the year before it was about thirteen. Um, they got, the folks that got the, the grant to my memory, please trust me if the best we can. Um, it was for a brand-new replacement building. Um, and some of them even got second opportunities because they didn't have enough money for their first grant, so they got, they were given money to finish their school and we didn't, were not given anything. So I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm just remembering.
From a certain perspective, um, my understanding and our understanding is that it is simply one element of many, but, uh, point taken, thank you, sir.
Thank you. I mean, I, I wanna be as best of the advocate as I can be and if I can, you know, make my little networks work for us and be a vocal point of, hey, look, why, and hey, don't forget us next time, then I wanna be able to, you know, be that person for us. Um, this ten million dollars you're asking for, when do, you need a commitment, but when do you actually need the money?
On the actual application, we have done a, um, now, understand this is at best an estimate.
Sure. But it gives us something, it's a projection.
But, um, a breakdown of, by local funding and, um, by state funding or grant funding, uh, by, over the next few years. So, uh, there, we're not asking for any money until, of course, the grant is awarded.
Sure.
Uh, at that point in time, uh, and this is very tentative, but a portion of that uh, local match would be initially given for the design phase. And then a little bit more the, the following year. So the way we have it apportioned, it's over a two to completion, two-year to a completion process. In other words, we wouldn't need the ten million dollar check.
Right.
Day one.
Right.
We would work with the, with the engineer, with the architects and, and break out a, a schedule. Um, probably by the time we would complete that, definitely by the time we would complete that, we would have all of the, um, the grant funding and then move forward. Again, that's a tentative schedule and, uh.
So you would need county money kind of upfront to get the preliminary stuff done and no, and then the grant money will fall in place.
Right.
Okay.
And then again, uh, moving through the project to, to the, to completion. But we'll have a, we'll have a sticker, a probably sticker shock, when, once we do, go through the design phase and then through the, through the bid phase.
Okay.
And that's when we'll come up with the exact calendar.
Yeah.
Did that answer your question, sir?
It does, yes, thank you. Um, one, once, one other small, just a request for what it's worth, um, like the state kind of came down to you and hey, by the way, tomorrow, can your email box, or comes this grant? Um, it would be helpful, cause I, I formed this question before, I knew we would definitely be getting money, but it would be helpful if we had at least two board meetings, to, a, a board meeting for you to present and then, and then give us a couple weeks to learn facts and dig and understand and appreciate and then come back and be able to be supportive at a next board meeting. So I realize y'all are under the gun on that one, but even if you can just like give us a preliminary, hey, we're gonna do this and we're thinking that, so put your thinking caps on and this is what we got, that would help me for sure, to be the advocate that I want to be for, for us, right?
And we actually, we actually, uh, communicated with, um, County Manager Denton the moment we determined. I mean, because initially, before everything dropped, we were thinking we were still at five percent.
Right, wonderful.
You've already committed to five percent.
We have, yes.
So it, but when that happened, and again, we, I, I, I respect what you're saying because we would have liked to have had a little more notice too.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. It makes it easier to work.
In a normal situation, you'll know when we, as soon as we know.
Sounds good. All right, thank you, Ms. Chairman, that's, that's all I really could, I could think of.
What elementary schools do we have in the county? I, I know.
Which elementary?
What, how many?
We have eight.
And what are the names on, we have eight?
We have eight.
Okay.
I have my list. I can read them.
Yeah, do that. I know, I think I know one, but I, I'm not sure.
I can probably do it from memory, but let me try to do it when, um, so Bun Elementary, uh, Everbest Elementary, Franklinton Elementary, Laurel Mill Elementary, Long Mill Elementary, Lewisburg Elementary, Royal Elementary and Youngsville Elementary. And we hope to see as many of you can tomorrow at Royal Elementary and Youngsville Elementary.
Eight-thirty in the morning.
Early in the morning.
That's right.
It's late for us, we've been to work for hours.
You also get off three o'clock. I know, I'm.
What time's it now?
So when, when do we need to commit to this?
I need, uh, we cannot submit the grant without a commit, the grant application, without, um, approval, without the commitment from the commissioners. And that grant is due September the thirteenth. That's why the moment we actually talked, did we need to come to the last meeting? Um, but this gives us just a little time to complete the application process, get all the signatures and get it turned in by the thirteenth. So unless the commissioners are meeting again after this, it would need to be tonight on the current schedule. And that's not our schedule, that's what comes from the state.
Right. I make a motion that we commit to the, um, match for Franklinton Elementary School.
Okay. Good. Motion made and a second discussion.
Ten million.
Yes, ten million, yes.
Question. Is that motion contingent upon them getting the grant?
Oh, yeah, because they said.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
He did say, and I think I heard you say that if we don't get the grant, we don't need the match.
Right, but our motion needs to reflect that.
Yes.
If we don't get the, the grant, then we have to pay for the whole thing.
Yeah.
Those ten dollars for a school is a pretty good deal.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I wholeheartedly support this ten million on the grant to get forty-two million from another source. That would be a, a win-win. Anyway, any other questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
All opposed? Motion carries.
On behalf of our, our board, our superintendent and the children of Franklin Elementary School and all Franklin County Schools, thank you for your partnership. I, with your permission.
Good, sure. Yeah, appreciate what all you do, you know, all your hard work, getting this up to us so we can keep up with things.
Thank you. And we hope to come back to you very soon and say.
Yes, yeah, now rooting for you on that.
I'm looking for that day.
We are, as we are, all are. We are, as we are, all are. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to item number four of the business. Anybody here have any other business? All right. Here are none. We'll go into item number five, board, manager, and clerk comments. And I'll start off with our clerk. Nothing. Our counselor. No comment? Not yet. Okay. All right. Commissioner Bun?
No comment.
Mr. London?
No comment.
Commissioner Wright?
I've had a lot going on since our last meeting. I did visit the senior center today, and the pool tables have been moved or put up in a larger room. There's actually three tables in there, and they make it put forward, because the room's pretty large. And there were six men in there playing on those three tables this afternoon. They didn't open this afternoon. They had it closed because there's some actual, some problems with some of the tables, and they had somebody coming to work on them and fix some of the pieces that was not quite right on the tables. And they still haven't gotten all the stuff in the room and the stuff on the boards on the wall and stuff like that. But at least they're being able to utilize it when it's open, and nobody's in there working on it. So I was real pleased to see that, see that the tables are up and they're moving. They've been quite happy. They're happy about that. Since the last meeting, I've been to two Council of Government meetings. One was actually this morning, the middle of the day today, in Henderson. So we've been busy with the Council of Governments. I also attended the Franklinton Town Board meeting this month, which I usually always attend those meetings unless we have a conflict. And I enjoy that, our relationship with the Franklinton town. This coming Thursday, I want to tell y'all that they're having the after five, it's the Chamber of Commerce for Franklinton. It's gonna be held at Sugar Grinders. It starts at five thirty. And there'll be a lot of people there. This is our second one that we've had with the camp, with the chamber. And that's quite a a good event. So if any of y'all can come, that would be good. And then the last thing is, this Friday is the first Friday in Franklinton. I think it starts about five. And there'll be vendors on the street, music at the park, and lots of things going to be, lots of people downtown in Franklinton. So if y'all haven't been able to go to one of those, that's a good event on Friday. Been busy.
You're good.
Been dying for the last two weeks.
All right. Commissioner Pierce?
I'll just make one comment. I was pleased to hear today that next Tuesday at ten a.m. there will be a groundbreaking for the Pilot Lines Club Dog Park.
Well, good. Good. Forward to that. Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday at ten a.m.
Ten a.m.
That's what Will Dorfer told me, anyway.
Got it. True.
All right, ten four on it. Commissioner Speed?
Oh, no comment.
Commissioner Schreiber?
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you. Been a little busy with the concerns coming from our community on taxation. Just Mr. Kermit, who I've known for twenty-seven years, as a building inspector in this county, came forward with a concern that his taxes have gone up over a hundred dollars a month, all because of a faulty and defective and inept evaluation of land values in our county, in my opinion. I received a message from a pastor who has a approaching ninety-year-old couple on their generational farm, and their taxes have went up forty-eight hundred dollars for one year. Now, I don't know like you all, but my parents, one of them in particular, struggles with paying for their medications, to the point they have to decide whether they're going to stay warm in the winter or take their medication. I can only imagine the strike that it would put my mommy to know she's got to find five thousand dollars this year coming up to keep a generational farm. I don't know what else to say to this county about this tax assessment, other than it is, I don't have the words. It keeps me up at night, thinking about folks that are less fortunate, and folks that have worked and given, folks that paid the taxes when we went to school, so that we could have a school. We could have teachers, coaches, peers, and counselors, and all those wonderful adults that make our lives better as they are today. And here they sit in their senior years, burdened with a tax bill that's just completely unjust. And this board collectively had an opportunity to do something different. And the majority of this board chose to close the Board of Equalization Review on the twenty-fifth of July against my outspoken concern. I don't know how I can make it any more clear than I did. And I apologize if I didn't do a good enough job. But now we have citizens in this county that finally got their tax bills. And this is what they're seeing. Because we had a duty to act, and we missed that opportunity. We failed. So how do we fix this? My understanding, they're gonna have to pay these bills. There's nothing that any one of us can do based on the law that changed that situation. They're stuck paying. And the only relief, the only ray of sunshine in this storm is January of next year and the opportunity to appeal these taxes. So I'm gonna beg this board, Mr. Chairman, this vice chairman, leadership of this board, I'm gonna beg you to get a process in place now, tomorrow, starting tomorrow, on how we're going to manage this, and how we're gonna keep this process true. Because almost everyone that I've heard from has said, just like Mr. Kermit did, I appealed it, sent me back this form, and they didn't do much. Well, it's time we do more than just a little bit of nothing. Because we failed our citizens with this tax assessment. Miserable. I wish I could pay people's taxes, but I can't. I got my own stuff to take care of. There's gotta be a better solution. And we need stronger leadership. This is a perfect example where we've got to slow down and put things aside that are less important, and take care of the ones that are most important. We're all important. But your taxpayers deserve to be treated important. So I'm asking the leadership of this board to put together committee, whatever you want to do. But let's get a plan. We can tell the citizens of this county, the taxpayers of this county, what they can look forward to in the future, how they can fix that situation come the next meeting, so that they don't have to pay this bill once. And give enough notice our towns can take the perfect measures as well. This isn't just about the county. This is about everyone, everyone in the county. So that's my humble request. Thank you for the time, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Ms. Kim Denton?
Thank you, Chairman Foley. Mr. Pierce, I appreciate you mentioning that. I was gonna call on Will. So Will, are there any additional details you'd like to add?
This will be presented on ten a.m.
Yes.
Commissioner Pierce, Ms. Chairman. So, yes, so ten a.m. next Tuesday at the Pilot Lines Dog Park, we'll have a ground digging.
I like that.
So you're all welcome to come out. We'll have some refreshments and some shovels and take some pictures.
Thank you, Will. And that's all I have.
That's all we have. Okay. Just want to touch a little bit on this, the rebound. A lot of this that we have is dictated from the state. It is from the legislature, from Raleigh, that dictate that every so often we have to do a rebound. That's part of the problem, and the way it's done. We do have the Board of E and R every year. We'll have it next year, too. And I've been hearing from a lot of folks, too, Mr. Hoyle, that we're gonna have that coming early next year, if we can't get anything resolved now, if can't get it re-looked at on the value, the right value and stuff. We, as the Board of E and R, will be looking at it, taking action on it. But like I say, go back again, this whole process, and all hundred counties have to do it. And what's really fueling it is all the growths and stuff that's happened, especially in the southern end of the county. It's just been astronomical. People paying way more money than what they ever had for acre land. Back, I remember when I first moved here in December of eighty, I saw land over in Youngsville for two thousand an acre. And that was high back then. I used to see it within the News and Observer, classified section. But look at it now. And that's what they base rebounds on, is market values. And that's the killer part. And I I feel for people, seniors, people that, you know, got big, lucky pools of money to pay all these extra taxes. It's a system that, from the state point, the General Assembly, legislature, the Senate, really need to look at. Because you take some of your senior folks, and they're not getting nothing but Social Security, and it's valued being tripled or tenfold. And they don't look at it as a big expensive thing. All they're trying to do is make ends meet. But all I can say again on that whole thing, we do the Board of E and R. So please, anybody you know of, yourself or whatever, be waiting to hear the starting dates of this E and R. And we'll be sure looking and trying to get some stuff fixed that wasn't valued right to start with.
Ms. Ms. Chairman, while we're on this subject?
Yeah.
I'd like to add that it's my understanding that the law states that any property owner can go to the tax collector and request a reduction in the value. And if the tax collector sees that it's justifiable, that that can be done. And this can be done before the E and R is convened.
Yeah, if there's a bit of wrong valuation. Yeah, oh, that's true anytime.
So I I think the public needs to be aware of that.
I mean, that's what I'm telling folks that I'm here from right now.
And not turned away.
Exactly.
He's right. But I've heard some circumstances recently, in the last two weeks, that they were turned away. Just said, wait till next year. No, that's not right.
Absolutely not.
And I said, early on, before this Board of Equalization was adjourned, I said before that, in open meeting, what are we gonna do when the tax bills come out and these older people that don't understand the process to begin with, finally get their bills? What are we gonna do? I said that then. And now here we are. It's it's just wrong.
Mr. Chairman, I I appreciate your comments about the law and Commissioner Speed about the law. Also, I need you all to be willing to recognize and accept the fact that the law gives us the full authority to adjust these things. And it gives us the full authority to to set a schedule of values. And the schedule of values, I believe, is where the problem begun. That is where the assessor determines what the value of everything is, of an acre of land, of a deck, of a covered porch or a non-covered porch, of a brick house versus a vinyl-sided house, of all those things. And if that schedule of values would have been tested, as I asked it to be done, starting in October of last year, that it be tested by sampling, we would have realized the problem that we have before us. That didn't happen. I then made a simple solution, because the law also affords this board of commissioners in this county of Franklin to keep open the Board of Equalization Review until the thirty-first of December. And the majority of this board made the decision, based on our tax assessor who turned in their resignation, is no longer employed here, to close it on the twenty-fifth of July. Let me also point out that this board, at my request in June board meeting, agreed with me to leave it open until the thirty-first of October, so that, so that when this situation occurs, as we knew it would, or I knew it would, we would still have the authority to deal with this ourselves. The tax office are appraisers. They are mathematically minded, and they are schedule-minded. They don't have the discretion or the privilege under the law to just go, yes, sir, Mr. Schreiber, you know what? I see your point, buddy. I'm gonna make that an even X, because you're right. They have to test that. It has to be proven. They have to see that there's comparables, or that there's whatever. They don't have the authority just to do that. We, as the Board of Commissioners, do. And we, as a majority, not as a unanimous, but as a majority, shut that door. And we shut it two weeks to three weeks after I had convinced this board that leaving it open to October thirty-first was the right decision. And it was a unanimous vote to leave it open until October thirty-first of this year. We could have fixed this. We could have answered the call of those, like Mr. Foley out there, like the pastor that called me about his elderly couple. We could have fixed their problems because their tax bills are not correct. There is no way of that an acre of land in the justice community or in white level is worth fifty thousand dollars an acre, and it's worth fifty-two thousand dollars an acre in Youngsville. There is no way. And I brought in samples before this board in meetings just like this recorded, showing, illustrating the discrepancies in the values right across the street from each other. Fifty-five acres of land at ninety-six thousand dollars an acre, and fifty-five thousand, fifty-five acres of land across the street at twenty-six thousand dollars an acre. I'm sorry, the math just doesn't add up. And that is not, that's not reasonable nor accurate. So while I appreciate that your understanding is the law says a few things, let's talk about what all the law says. And that all the law gives this Board of Commissioners in this county of Franklin the authority through the Board of Equalization Review to address these citizens' issues, had we done one thing, left the Board of Equalization Review. But we didn't. Thank you again for your time.
All right. Just one more that I'd like to add to that, though. Back last year, we had that most important piece to the rebound is the schedule of values. And it was a seven-zero vote in favor. So that's the most key thing.
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not gonna do it debate.
And that was because, and that was because, listen, no, no, sir.
But you did, too. We all did.
That was because we didn't have a choice, because the law said we had to pass it by December thirty-one. Madam Counselor, if I'm wrong in any of this, please, please correct me at your at your leisure. We had until December thirty-one to pass the schedule of values. Yes, we had till December thirty-one to pass the schedule of values. And we had one board meeting in December, and that's when we got that book in front of us. What choice did we have? Hopefully, I thought there were other options available to us in the days and weeks ahead. However, sadly, I learned later, there was not. Or the Board of Equalization Review was our only hope. And that's why I've been the advocate and the drumbeater of the Board of Equalization Review. Thank you for yielding the time, sir.
Yeah, okay.
To allow the citizens the opportunity thoroughly, because they didn't have it before then. So there is, there are the facts, and they're unrefuted.
Okay. All right. All right. Moving right along. Okay. I know at our last meeting, we had the issue come up on cell, the our emergency communication system in regards to the New Hope antenna. And I have been hearing from some folks on that, some issues on that, that we have cut back on that coverage from the twenty megabytes or whatever they go by, down to eighteen megabytes. And a lot of concern on that. I didn't have all the information, or I didn't hear some of that, till right here recently, on our move on that, to go back on that. And I think something we need to, we, when we did this whole system, we were demanding certain specifications and milestones on upgrading this emergency communication system. And sometimes I think maybe, our meeting a two ago, maybe we make a rash decision and cut back on that antenna at New Hope. And we need to hold maybe the people that bitted on that or awarded the contract, make them put out like they said they would. Now, that's just my feeling. Now, that's just my feeling, not completely.
Wasn't that an FAA requirement there that we had to reduce the height of the tower?
Yeah, but there's people that were doing this work should have known that when they bitted.
Correct. If they did their due diligence.
Yeah, right. It goes back to, there's something, uh, I wanted to bring up, I feel really, something that might haunt us in the future where the growth is coming out here. We have a little weak link in this communication and was, oh, here we are again.
Commissioner Foy, uh, if I can add to that, um, some of the concern has been, um, the fact that we are paying for their mistake, not recognizing the due diligence and design of this system and having to back off. And then we had to, we had to pay a little more money
Right.
for that because of the change. Um, from what I understand, you know, as far as coverage, there are going to be more towers added to the system. So I don't know that the coverage or the signal is going to be, the concern is as much as paying for their mistake. And I would like to re, readdress that.
Yeah, yes.
Most definitely.
Look there.
Chairman Foy, would it be acceptable if, uh, I know that our TUSA consultant gave a report on that
Yeah.
at the time that we considered the change order?
Mm-hmm.
And we have done some preliminary review of that. And so would it be acceptable if we bring a report about this matter back to the next meeting?
Yes.
Absolutely.
I think that'd be great. Yes, ma'am.
A more fulsome explanation of this and, and why, uh, the TUSA consultant made the recommendation that they did. I think, I think they'll bring a clearer understanding for everyone, um, as well as the, the cost associated with, uh, the FAA issues that were ultimately approved. But staff will take that as a to-do item and bring that report back to the next meeting.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yes, let's do it. Yeah, make sure it's on each other.
Did we make, did we have a motion on that the last meeting?
Yes.
And what was that motion?
Motion was to approve the funding. We can rescind.
Okay. We'll just hold on to the paperwork until we resolve this.
Yeah. Okay. All right, we're gonna revisit that then. All right, uh, tomorrow starts our day, eight-thirty in the morning, Royal Elementary. Immediately after that one, B Youngsville Elementary. Just to broadcast that out. I know I'll be there and I'm sure it'll be some other commissioners here, but I'll be first to say, I know there's a lot of commissioners here that have to work and have other commitments, doing the best they can. Because I know how that feels, but I know I'll be there and I'm sure some others will be there. Anyway, another thing I'd like to mention too, the, Mr. Nathan Page, City of Youngsville. I believe I mentioned this before, but we are doing due diligence and trying to get this bypass going around Youngsville, very much so. Think we're doing all around on this issue. We're very serious on it. Think we're going to get there, sure will, one way or another. And that completes my report. Is there anything else here to come before the board? Somebody like to speak their piece? Now is the time to do it. Here, nothing else. We'll move on to item six, which is our closed session. The board is asked to enter into closed session pursuant to the following North Carolina general statutes. NCGS one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven A five, real property purchase, contract and leases. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to go into closed session.
Is there a second? Second, been a motion made and second, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
No.
Might have to do a roll call? Yeah, that's moving right on.
I voted yes.
I voted no.
I voted yes.
I voted no.
I voted yes.
No.
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, hopefully this won't take very long. We'll be right back out.